And our recording secretary, Ms. Bittner, if she would do the roll call, please.
Mr. Bartnik?
Here.
Mr. Clark? Mr. Courtney?
Here.
Mr. Fisher? Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Thank you. And with that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Evans for a presentation on a summary of newly adopted zoning ordinance.
Okay, well, as everybody may be aware, the city council adopted a new zoning ordinance in April, and with that came some significant changes to the ordinance. Essentially, it was rewritten. It was a base document, it was a 40-year-old document. And what we're going to talk about tonight would be the provisions that apply to this board, the zoning board of appeals. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the things that have been rewritten, including some of the tests that have been enumerated a little differently that we have to find exist in order to grant a variance. And also, what happened with some permissions and other types of variances that we were allowed to do. They've been kind of moved to different areas of the zoning ordinance, so we'll talk a little bit about that. The city attorney's office has also prepared a discussion on some case law that applies to some of our variance standards, and perhaps we'll be able to hear a little bit about that tonight. Essentially, the first part of your packet is the January 11th cover memo to the planning commission from city staff regarding the draft zoning ordinance. And it was a draft back then. And essentially, near the bottom of the document, I've highlighted some of the changes that were required in the zoning ordinance to comply with the Michigan zoning enabling act, which is the law that allows us to have zoning, and applicable case law. And is everybody familiar with case law and kind of what that means and how that works? Anyone who's not, maybe that's a better way to put it. Okay, all right. Well, essentially, I've highlighted those changes there. I don't necessarily want to read them all, they're pretty self-explanatory. I guess if anyone has any questions, I'm going to touch upon those further on in the presentation, but if anyone has any questions along, at any time during the presentation, just let me know. We'll move on to this spreadsheet that I did, which talks about the zoning ordinance, summarizes the changes. We've indicated there the subject matter, what the old zoning ordinance said. I'm sorry, the first column's actually the old section, the new section, so everybody can look at it in the zoning ordinance if they want to. And actually, that document right here is actually a, should be a hyperlink to the actual zoning ordinance. So if you control and click on there on your, it'll bring up the online version of the zoning ordinance. Just briefly, how much experience does everybody have of paging through this document online? Anybody? Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
My question is, is there a way to view it online without downloading it to the computer? Or does you have to, does it automatically download to the computer every time you click on the PDF?
Well, it will download as a website, so it won't download as a document. You'd have to save it. And you can, you know what I've done is I've saved it on my computer as a PDF, and it downloads much faster.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Essentially, at the bottom of most of the pages, table of contents, you can click on that, it'll take you to the table of contents. Our section is section...
Fifteen.
Yeah, I'm having trouble reading it, sorry. Fifteen, zoning board of appeals. So when you click on any of these blue titles, it'll take you right there. So that's really the basis of what we're going to talk about tonight.
Before you get into this...
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you explain to me what is an unnecessary hardship?
I might be able to do that. Essentially, I'll be able to do that a little later on in the presentation, okay?
Okay.
Essentially, though, the quick answer is that's a higher standard than a practical difficulty, and we'll get into that a little more.
If it's unnecessary, it would...
Don't let that throw you.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. So essentially, you know, we changed our name to, from Board of Zoning Appeals, the Zoning Board of Appeals, as required by the state law, the zoning enabling act. And I'm having trouble reading that on the screen, so I'm going to pull up a copy to put in front of me here. Yeah, thanks, Ken. Thanks, Ken. All right. Essentially, the membership, the number of members stays the same, but there's a difference now, as you may be aware, we had a planning commission alternate, which would be a representative of the planning commission, and also a planning commission member. So two people were appointed from the planning commission, an alternate and a regular member. That alternate could only serve for the regular member. So in this instance, say Tom couldn't make it, under the old ordinance, the planning commission alternate Phil would serve for him. If Phil can't make it, the seat stays open. Alan, if you couldn't make it, we couldn't send the planning commission alternate to cover for you. We just have an opening. Now, what we've done is council shall appoint two alternates, and these are basically at-large alternates. So Alan, if you can't make it, the alternate sits. Or if a member has a potential conflict of interest with a case, maybe it's not in the best interest to sit on a case. They can sit down and have the alternate be up, so we have as full a board as possible. If the planning commission member can't make it, the alternate at large serves for him, we do not have a planning commission alternate. So that's one thing I, we hope that will help have a full board more than, more than not.
Sir, Evans, did the ordinance specify any ordering as far as the alternate is concerned? Let's say we have one person absent that night, and we have two alternates. Is it up to us to decide who, which alternate takes the spot, or...
Good question, Dave. The ordinance does not specify.
Okay.
What I've done in other communities with a similar setup is alternate the alternates, given both some experience sitting up here. Now, the ordinance continues to call out for two types of variances, dimensional variances, which are things like setback, lot areas, heights, and also use variances. A use variance is basically when someone wants to use a piece of property for use that is not permitted in that zoning ordinance. Remember, zoning is a permissive use. So in, I'll use single-family residential, for example, it talks about all kinds of residential uses. It doesn't list a factory as something you can do there. So if you want to do a factory in a subdivision, you come for a use variance. The main difference in today's ordinance and the previous ordinance is that use variances are now permitted. The board can consider use variances, but I will remind everybody, or maybe tell you for the first time, because we didn't really work with them under the previous ordinance, it's a very high standard that people have to meet. Essentially, in a nutshell, to get a use variance, you have to demonstrate an unnecessary hardship, and one of the components of that is that the property cannot reasonably be used for an allowed purpose. So if you go in and say, hey, I want to use that subdivision lot, you know, it's been vacant for a long time, the builder's selling it for a good deal, I want to put a factory here. Well, sir, what's precluding you from using that to put a house up? I mean, can you put a house up there? Well, it's not my business model. Well, could someone put a, well, sure they could. Well, it's a steep test, and it's really reserved for very, very unique circumstances, which, what this board is designed for, is to give people adequate relief for unique circumstances. Let's talk a little bit about dimensional variances, if we could. We have a new standard that is called practical difficulty. And I'm going to move around here a little bit on the overhead. And what our ordinance has been rewritten to do is spell out about five criteria, and I'm going to move to, the criteria for granting variances just past the spreadsheet. Section A, or section two, the criteria to grant a variance, basically is listed in the ordinance. It's called a practical difficulty. Those standards were established in a case from 1985 regarding National Boatland versus Farmington Hills Board of Appeals. And they established four criteria to determine what practical difficulty is, and those have been incorporated, not verbatim, but in general, into our standards. Our standards are very similar to what the previous zoning ordinance said. Briefly, the following conditions need to be found, and I'm going to summarize these out of the zoning ordinance. As a matter of fact, on your handout, Sue typed that up, our attorney, and she pulled them right from the ordinance. There have to be exceptional characteristics of the property that meet compliance with dimensional requirements substantially more difficult than the great majority of properties in the same district. So perhaps you have a property that's unique compared to the other people in the neighborhood or on the street or wherever it might be. Some, and our ordinance goes on to clarify some characteristics which you have to consider, including exceptional narrowness, shallowness, smallness, maybe an irregular shape. Topography is a good one. Maybe there's some pristine vegetation that should be 100-year, 200-year-old trees or something like that. Or other similar characteristics, and we've got some flexibility there. We go on to say that if the characteristics which make the dimensional requirements difficult, compliance with those difficult, must be related to the premises in question, not some other question. That's pretty similar to what we had before. Got to make sure it's not of a personal nature. So I'm going to ask Sue to talk about that a little bit, on the discussion of personal nature. The fourth one is that they must not have been created by the current or previous owner, and a lot of times that's referred to as a self-created practical difficulty. There can be a lot of different things, but, you know, it's on a case-by-case basis, but at the end of the day, you know, one attorney one time argued that every variance is self-created because if they had adjusted their plans, they could fit what they wanted to do. However, that's a very strict interpretation, and that's why we have a board of seven and all these other characteristics we have to look at. Were they created by the current or previous owner? Are they truly a situation with the property and the allowed uses and how they have to go on the property and be situated? The final one, I know you're familiar with, the variance will not be harmful or alter the essential character of areas in which the property is located. We talk about impairment of adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property, congestion on public streets, fire, basically all health, safety, and welfare things. And we can use a lot of those as well when we filter out and consider the request for variance on a case-by-case basis. Now, what the change in, remember how we used to do those motions? We had a particular motion format? We can't really apply that anymore because the standards are different. In a, in a big picture, they're the same, but they're listed out differently and they're more expounded. So basically, what our motions are going to do, if we want to grant a variance, is we're going to follow up on the fact that we've made findings of A, B, C, D, and E, and we could even enumerate those findings. So we can basically use this language to create a motion to grant, or if it's a motion to deny, we can say we haven't found the following, and then cite the characteristics or the things that are or aren't there when we make that. So that's going to be a little different for the board. The good news is, is essentially, these standards are pretty close to the same, just enumerated, in my mind, better, more clearly, and follow case law, the Boatland case. Any questions so far?
Michael, do you have a question?
I might go back a little bit, but I...
Sure.
Well, I guess this would go when you start talking about use variances opposed to the non...
Right, use variances is...
I have a question about the use variances.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Why don't you go ahead and ask it?
Well, just to discuss, for example, the special use, the special use proposal that would go in front of the planning commission...
Okay.
For example, on the May 10th minutes that were supplied to us.
Yeah.
You know, some, some of the differences, et cetera. With regard to the use variances here.
Okay. I think I understand your, I'm not sure I understand your question, the difference...
There was a special, there was a special use request...
Right.
Goes to the planning commission.
Okay.
Will that still go to the planning commission under the new ordinance? And is that different than a use, how is it different?
Yes, a special use, yes.
That would come here.
A special use is an allowed use that has additional review and approval criteria, including those that allow the planning commission to apply standards not necessarily contained in the zoning ordinance to assure that the use is compatible with the surrounding area. So for example, if I build a house, and I've got a specific front, side, and rear yard setback, that doesn't require special land use. Special, so we can, the city can approve that. With a special land use, well, what's a good example?
A church.
A church. Outdoor dining. I got a good one for outdoor dining if I could. Is it reasonable for the city to impose certain, let's say, dimensional and site design standards for outdoor dining, and would those be appropriate in every area? For example, let's take the Drury Inn across the street. Say they want to put outdoor dining between, in the back, between them and the freeway. Say the city had requirements to say, well, it's got to be a certain distance from neighboring property lines, you must have six-foot walls around it, you can't have, all the things that might regulate a potential outdoor use. Would those provisions be appropriate for an outdoor patio behind Drury Inn as opposed to say a smaller lot on Rochester Road that is substantially closer to a single-family residential district? So in other words, we're telling people to invest time and design standards and money into something that maybe those standards aren't appropriate for every outdoor patio that goes up. So in summary, the planning commission has the ability, through the special use process, to administer very specific standards for those types of uses. And there's a public hearing, so like, you know, if the neighbors come and say, hey, I'm worried about noise. Or in the Drury Inn, if the neighbors don't come in and say, I'm not worried about noise, or I live across the freeway, I couldn't, I wouldn't know if they were there anyways. Okay, well, then you don't need an eight-foot wall, or whatever it might be, you know? So that's a, Mike, have I answered your question so far?
I think so.
Okay. So special uses are allowed uses. So when we talk about use variances, this is if somebody comes in and in a previous situation, asks for a factory in a residential area. And on page, page two of the text that Sue drew up, she talks about an unnecessary hardship, and our zoning ordinance defines it by setting out specific criteria necessary to grant a use variance, and these criteria are different than the ones listed for the, the dimensional variances. Briefly, let's see, what do we have here? There's some conditions that the site cannot, there's the one I talked about, the site cannot reasonably be used for any of the uses allowed within the current zoning designation. That's usually, in the limited times I've heard use variances, that's usually the number one hurdle, that it can be used, it can reasonably be used, and it can be used in a similar manner to other people in the neighborhood. In other words, you don't have to build, and I'm exaggerating, a 300-square-foot, 10-foot-wide house to fit that lot. You can build a house that reasonably fits in with the neighborhood. Therefore, it might not be appropriate to allow that factory in that area under a use variance. What else it goes on to say, under item B, that it's unique to the property, not commonly present in the area, and not, there are conditions or features of the land that are not applicable throughout the zone. So we've got a lot of property in the city that is zoned IB, industrial business. It doesn't necessarily apply to the houses or the, on that block or in that few square blocks, but what are the conditions throughout the IB zone that make this property unique and therefore would preclude you from doing what the zoning district allows for you to do? So we can consider a larger area throughout the city in those types of requests. And some of this, they go into enumerate in one, two, three, and four, about the shape of a property, topographic conditions, uses immediately adjoining, and really any other physical situation that might be deemed by the board as extraordinary. So we do have some latitude to consider these types of requests, as are other requests, on a case-by-case basis, based on its own merits and uniqueness. We talk about essential character to the neighborhood or intent to the master plan, and that's something important, too. Many of our, using the single-family residential zoning as an example, the reason why the new zoning ordinance continues to classify those neighborhoods as single-family residential is because the master plan continues to say those areas need to remain single-family residential. So one of the things that we could consider in the instance where someone wants to put a factory in the subdivision is, well, the master plan calls for that area to remain single-family residential. You're asking for something that's not single-family residential, so they may not satisfy that standard. Standard C. Self-creation is actually another one that also applies to the other category. And they talk about basically capacity of public roads, utilities, and other facilities will not be compromised. One thing that's different with this section in the ordinance is that if somebody says, hey, I want to get a use variance, they apply for a use variance, but they're required by the ordinance to present to staff and sit down with staff, in other words, me and the city attorney, and tell us, what are you going to tell the board? What's your list of reasons, and what's your support? The main reason for that is, one, to have some predictability. Number two, we need to make sure that the things they submit are reasonably related to the criteria that we're going to consider. In my experience with a few use variances, the hearings are very long. And this basically gets staff on the same page with the applicant, so we can minimize and make efficient use of the time, and also eliminate anything that really doesn't apply. In other words, we don't believe, sir, that that piece of information the board is allowed to consider. And maybe the city attorney would say something like, if you bring that up at the hearing, I will instruct my board that they would not be allowed to consider that as part of this, part of the testimony and criteria. Well, therefore, it's probably best just not to be said. And if, and that's what we're trying to do, is try to get to agreement as to what, what's going to be presented to the board. Now...
Before you go to the next subject...
Yes.
Says here that there's reasonable evidence of unnecessary hardship and that all of the following conditions are met. What is unnecessary hardship as opposed to regular hardship? What makes it unnecessary? Unnecessary to me would mean you don't need the hardship.
A better answer could be given by our legal counsel, so I would have to pass on that.
Good, good enough for now.
All right. I think what she's going to, would say is that it does rely on case law in that, I believe years ago, unnecessary hardship was the variance that many boards used for all types of variances. And I want to say, for whatever reason, Boatland was the case that said, hey, there's another standard here, practical difficulty, but I'll let Sue enumerate upon that further.
My, my understanding is it's just unnecessary, it's just an adjective. It says as you're, you're writing or conveying a sentence or thought instead of saying just you're experiencing...
It's unnecessary.
You're experiencing hardship, you're, you're experiencing just, it's more semantics than anything, it's not...
If you have an unnecessary hardship...
It might be more semantics, yeah, that might just be the, the term that has carried over from case law and previous law.
Extra hardship that we should get around, type of thing.
Yeah, I, well, I defer to, to smarter people than I, who'll be here later, but my understanding is that the term is hardship, the term unnecessary is like an adjective that is worked in that fit in, let's say, some English language, the sentence sounded better.
I think, yeah, when you, well, when you're saying it that way, that sounds, yeah, you've got an unnecessary hardship, so you should do...
Right, yeah. You could have said, you have a hardship, but the...
Okay, now I understand.
And I think you're on there.
It makes, it makes sense there.
Make sure you're speaking into the microphone, because the gentleman down, they can't hear you, so...
No, it makes, it makes sense there when you say unnecessary, it's unnecessary.
It's unnecessary that you have this hardship.
Yeah.
Yeah. Paul, I was wondering, I'm not sure if I'm missing the obvious, but...
No, go ahead.
Is there a reason why capital letter B, we go from A to C? She may have lifted text, talking, pages one and two.
Yeah.
I just wondered, is there, what is section B?
I'm going to see if she did lift text, just a little cut and paste.
I just wanted to ask that.
Sure, that's a good question. And I'm going to have to purport that that's a typo, because it really doesn't even mirror the, the lettering and numbering. A, B, and C do, but beyond that, it doesn't use the same letters. And we might be able to get a more accurate answer in just a few moments.
But the capital letter C is probably a capital letter B?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. Let me know when you're ready.
Mr. Chair, apologize for being late, had a small family emergency, couldn't get here till now.
Maybe, before we go on, maybe Ms. Lancaster, you can answer an easy question and a hard question.
Okay.
Have Mr. Neal ask the easy question.
Well, let me know once you're, you're settled.
Okay, I think I'm okay.
Okay.
I see where you are.
Regarding the text, pages one and two, page one, beginning with criteria for granting variances, on the left-hand side, there's a, fully justified, there's a capital letter A, and then it goes through non-use variance requirements, practical difficulty, et cetera. And you move on to page two, about halfway down the page, there's a capital letter C. Is there a section B, or is the C supposed to be a B?
I believe the C is supposed to be a B. Thank you very much for that correction.
I was just wondering what section B was about, and I want to make sure I read it, that's all.
Section B was really good, but I, no, I'm, I'm just teasing.
It was a little, little lengthy, huh? Okay. That's just what I wanted to note, thank you.
The harder question is, and Mr. Evans made a good attempt at it, and some of us here on the board made some clarifications, that's the term unnecessary hardship. Maybe if you could clarify, does it have a meaning aside from the way it's specified in the ordinance?
Not really. Unnecessary hardship has kind of been the traditional term that's been used through case law before, several years ago, when they re, they amended all the zoning enabling acts. They, they really don't use it that much anymore, except that it's kind of a traditional term that's used for non-use variances. And actually, the new, the language set out in our new ordinance parallels what the state is calling an, or the state enabling act is calling an unnecessary hardship. So we threw it in there because you still see people who have involved in zoning for a long time using those terms.
Okay.
This is more or less me saying, you have an unnecessary hardship with this, and we're going to...
Exactly.
Okay.
Right. And those are terms that you will still hear kicked around, and they are still used in case law today.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Evans, I guess you can keep going with your presentation.
Sure. You know, briefly, Sue, we're at the point where we are talking about dimensional and use variances.
Okay.
And, um...
Good timing on my part.
Yeah, would you just like to say a couple, Sue provided a case, National Boatland versus the city of Farmington Hills. Sue, perhaps we just wanted to give the members a brief, I explained to them that the components of practical difficulty in Michigan are, are based on that case, and that's really where, where they came from.
Sure. I thought it was valuable to attach the case because from my point of view, in terms of why we sit on these boards, it's a good synopsis of what courts do when they take, when an appeal is taken from the board. when an appeal is taken from the board. And to read it, you can see how the court takes the dialogue from what you're used to doing every day, where you make your record. And they actually look at it and read it and try and figure out the thinking of the board, and they're looking for errors that you make, any arbitrary decisions. And in the Boat Land case, it's still one of the most quoted cases whenever a zoning case comes up or an appeal comes up. And basically, that talks about the difference between practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships. But in that particular case, it was a non-conforming particular piece of property that the owner brought up to, wanted to update. In doing so, he wanted some fence variance, he wanted to put up some, there was a requirement of some trees and things of that nature. And the case is good because the court actually takes each of the points that the board makes and goes through an analysis of why they are, that's good decision-making, and why they thought that decision was clearly, that the petitioner had not demonstrated any practical difficulties. So, I attached it with the idea that you could read that and kind of glean from it. Most of you have been sitting on boards for a long time, and I don't have to tell you this, but we get really excited as attorneys when we hear a good record being made, because you make our job so much easier if there's an appeal. And those of you that have been sitting on, at least the planning commission and the zoning board knows that that rarely happens. Most people accept your decision, but we do occasionally get a lawsuit filed against us. And all we have to go on as attorneys is the record that you made. Sometimes you put things in your motion, which is a good way of doing it, but you don't necessarily have to. And in Boat Land, there was really nothing in their motion that was approved. It was all the dialogue, the transcript of the meeting that the court looked at to see who was saying what. So, when you talk to a petitioner about, you know, "Why do you need this?", and you're trying to get answers out of the petitioner, and we hear you asking these good questions, and it just makes our job a lot easier if there's an appeal. So, and that's another reason why I gave you the case, so that you could read that and see how the courts look at what you actually say. They actually go through it, and sometimes they'll quote your name, so. But if there's any specific questions regarding Boat Land, I'll be happy to answer those.
I found it interesting that the, in Boat Land, the two neighbors that were immediately, the two property owners that were immediately behind the property, I think were in favor of the proposed variance to have no fence and no trees.
Yes.
And yet, the Court of Appeals upheld the zoning board, denial of the request for variance.
That's correct.
Did you want to touch on that discussion, how it relates to what we do here?
Well, again, I think what the court looks at is the totality of what the board is doing with whatever is presented to them by petitioners. My experience has been, is that you hear a lot of different things that petitioners, are important to petitioners. For example, in that particular case, they didn't want trees necessarily, they thought that they were going to, as I recall, drip syrup sap on their properties, or in the Boat Land said it was going to drip sap on their boats. But what the board has to listen to is what the petitioners are telling you. I was trying to think of some examples today. Often, you will get a petitioner that wants a sunroom in the back, and you have that setback requirement. And they think in terms of the fact, and you hear this a lot, that grandpa's getting older and he needs a place to sit. And one of the criteria that you have to use is that it can't be a personal reason. You really have to detach yourself from emotional issues, like people who say things like that or say, "I've waited all my life to do this, I got a lottery winnings, and I have the finances to do this." You can't look at financial issues, you can't look at personal issues. So, my advice to you in those things are that, when you get those cases where you kind of feel sorry for the petitioner, you kind of understand what they're saying, is to help the petitioner formulate some other reasons why he might want that, besides, you know, grandpa needs a nice place to sit. So, even though that's rather working backwards, if you, if you think it fits all the other criteria, it doesn't interfere with the neighbors, maybe the neighbors are in agreement, you might have a bunch of them that show up, so that it's not really going to be an issue with the neighborhood, but that you're making your record, my suggestion would be to try and assist the petitioner by asking questions where you will get a response that makes a record, that shows that you're not thinking about the personal hardship, you're thinking about either the shape of the land, or, you know, the size of the land, or formulating something that you can think of, anything that might be helpful. And even though I think boards worry an awful lot, especially when you get new materials and you get these long lists of things you're supposed to analyze, I would tell you, spend less time thinking about, "Am I saying this right?", than to just try and use your common sense and say, "How can I relate this to the land? How can I help the petitioner?" If in fact, you're, you're thinking that, okay, it meets all the other criteria, but the petitioner's not helping us make a decision. Sometimes as board members, you can do that. You can help by asking the right questions. And if they don't get it, maybe one of the neighbors will come up, or sometimes they have a representative, like from a, a construction company, who might get what you're getting at and step forward and give you some reason to put on the record why you should give that, other than a personal reason. So, in Boat Land, I think the court felt that, even though the neighbors didn't want it, looking at the long picture, the board felt that it would have, be detrimental to what else was in the area, and so they, they didn't pay attention to that. They trusted the board. The board had a really thorough discussion in that particular case about trees and blockage of the view and theft. I think that one of the claims was that, "We're afraid somebody's going to destroy our boats, or if we put..." But, you know, the board's answer to that was, "Well, you've had a fence, and that didn't keep the thieves out," or, so. Anyway, it's just some suggestions on my part, having sat on boards for a while.
Yeah, I'd like to comment, too, whether it's the applicant speaking or the public speaking. I think if the board, as individual members or as a group or through the chair, sometimes people can start talking about things that, quite honestly, the board can't utilize. I think in one hearing, we had somebody talked about the hours of trash pickup, which had nothing to do with the proposal at all, and we really can't use that. Some comments I've heard, not necessarily from this board, but from the public, is, "Lan, I got this postcard in the mail, and my neighbor's doing something, and I really don't like it, I'm going to go out and..." "No, I went there, and they asked me to speak, so I spoke. I told them everything I thought, and, you know, they just didn't listen to me, because at the end of the night, they granted everything I was against." And sometimes I think it's important for the board that if it's either an applicant or the public, that perhaps the comments just cannot be used by the board, that we may explain to them, maybe say, "Hold on, we can't use that, here's what we can use", and try to keep them focused. That way, they might not get the impression that either A, they wasted their time, or B, for the sake of everyone at the meeting, including other applicants, the board, everybody here, they're doing their best, and the board's helping them focus on the practical difficulty criteria. And a third thing, as Sue mentioned, is not everyone who comes in, Joe homeowner, for example, probably has never been before a board of appeals, and quite honestly, even though I try to give people the best advice I can, is staff to prepare them, you can only do so much. Sometimes the conditions exist, and they haven't said it. So, like Sue said, get them to answer on the record, ask them the question, "Sir, is it true that the nearest house to you is 5,000 feet?" Even though they didn't say it in the presentation, you guys can see that, and that's perfectly acceptable. Then they've created a record, and you've given yourself a leg to stand on, while at the same time, giving the applicant a comfort level that they, you know, they've never been here before, they don't, they might not know to think of that or forget about it or be nervous. So, you know, and on the flip side, if there's no practical difficulty, or you don't believe there's a practical difficulty, you can also use that in the other way as well. You know, there's certain conditions that just aren't a practical difficulty, and they're not going to come out and, they may not come out and say that, because they want to get their variance. But, you know, if you ask them, "Well, sir, is it true that the nearest house to you is very close?" "Well, yes, it is." "Well, how close do you think it is?", you know? Things like that. So, you can do that both ways. That helps us focus on the criteria that you need to have for the leg to stand on before you make your motion. And also, everyone in the audience will understand that this is, or hopefully they'll understand, this is why the board came to their decision, as opposed to ancillary items that were mentioned, but you can't use. So, that's some techniques that I've seen boards use before in the past to kind of move things along, and also keep everybody focused as to what needs to be found. Well, real quick, then, I'll just proceed further on with the spreadsheet. I'm just going to touch upon a few of these. One of the things we used to see is temporary outdoor parking of commercial vehicles, and that was a permission, not a variance, that we were used to be permitted to allow, and it was subject to specifically reviewing approval standards. We no longer have the ability to grant those on a temporary, on any basis, except through a variance. So, we would, well, the definition of commercial vehicles in residential areas, that's remained consistent, the allowances for outdoor parking is consistent. If somebody needs to get relief from those, they would need to seek a variance, it would be under the dimensional variance standards.
And it would be under a permanent basis, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless of course, well, the board would have the ability to condition it if they wanted on a non-permanent basis, and you could do that on a case-by-case basis. Perhaps there's unique circumstances where the board believes it is appropriate for a period of time, and they have the option to condition.
But that would have to be structured in your motion? That'd be like a year long or something?
Yes, you definitely want to structure that in your motion, so it's clear that that's what you intended to do.
And since variance is run with the property and not with the owner, in that case, you probably want to make it a temporary variance, I would assume.
You know, in general, temporary variances, it could be argued that temporary variances should never be given.
Okay.
And I'm not necessarily giving that as advice to the board, because it could be on a situational basis. But the argument can be made is that, well, if you meet the criteria now, come on in, is there anything that would preclude you from meeting it in the future? And if not, why wouldn't you give them a permanent variance? And it works the other way as well.
Well, that's, that's where the quote, "personal nature," close quote, of the applicant really comes into play, is on these commercial vehicles, because usually it's because, you know, the applicant is in a, I mean, we know, we know all the scenarios, but-
Yeah.
That would almost lead towards denial of such a variance request.
That's true.
Because it does not meet one of the minimum requirements.
Well, that's true, it may, but certainly, you know, each case is-
Each case is a bit, sure.
But you're right, based on previous hearings that we've had, that has been definitely some of the things that our applicants have told us. Their boss makes them take the vehicle home, or they, you know, "It's inconvenient, because they're on call," these kinds of things. And so, those, that is something that the board would need to consider as to whether they want to approve or not approve a variance request.
But if the, if the variance for, for, let's say, a vehicle is made and is permanent, and it's attached to the land, am I right in thinking that if the party then sells the home, that this variance goes to the new homeowner, even though maybe they don't need it, but it's still attached to it?
Yes, that-
Isn't that true?
That, I think that's a correct interpretation.
Okay.
You know, if, I guess, in putting this, you know, if I'm trying to sell a house and say, "Here's an added feature. You can park your steak truck here as long as you park it here and cover it with these bushes." Well, how do you know that? Well, I've got this variance here.
Yeah.
But I want $20,000 more. But, yeah, that's definitely something the board should consider or can consider, I should say.
Well, is it, is it acceptable to structure that the, a permission such as this is permanent for as long as the given party owns it? Or is that something we can't do? I guess what it comes down to is, how much leeway do we have when we structure a motion as to the nuances that we might add? Because it could get a little silly after a while.
Well, certainly, since they are on a case-by-case basis-
Yeah.
We make sure to try to set it up so you can structure your motion in a way that meets the intent of what the board wants to accomplish. I have worked with other boards of appeals that have, in your example, suggesting you do or don't do this, but they've said, basically, you get a variance for the vehicle and this vehicle only. So, if someone else wants to come in with a different vehicle, well, in theory, the thought was, there'd be a new public hearing and a new record established for the particular circumstance. So, that, that was one way that other boards of appeals have addressed commercial vehicles in residential areas.
This would be the way we'd rent the guy that has the plumbing vehicle and operates from his house and has for 20 years. He could still go, and that would avoid the next guy coming in with the highway tractor and maybe his trailers, too.
That would be one way, yeah. If you say it's for this type of van, as described in the exhibits, that's what you have. That's what you've granted approval for.
Even if he got a bigger one, he'd have to come back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Mr. Chair, along those same lines, I think, when I think of a temporary variance, the reason why you give that is because they're usually things that have a tendency to change more than dimensional variances like setbacks. I mean, once you build a house, you can't ask someone to tear it down. But temporary variances can change so dramatically, because the plumbing truck that you saw that had one spot for a ladder and could eventually end up being something that has all sorts of equipment on it, even though it's the same truck. So, you can reexamine, and you can also reexamine how it's affected the neighborhood, and if no, more neighbors are complaining and things of that nature, so. And I think that you could argue this both ways in a court of law, that if you granted a permanent variance, that meant that the new homeowner got the variance. But at the same time, if that new homeowner brought anything in, but what, that truck that you approved, that's not what your variance was. It was for this plumbing truck, this type of truck. I think it would possibly be the same size truck, but, you know, if they started bringing in semis, that would not meet your definition of what your variance was. I think we'd have a pretty good shot at winning that with the courts.
But you'd probably be better off doing a temporary, maybe for longer than one year.
Right, just to see how things develop and any modifications in the neighborhood, any... It means, one of the reasons why there's been so many, personally, my observation with commercial vehicles is that it's the way life has changed for all of us. I mean, people buying SUVs, and so many people are working out of their houses, and so it's become more of a concern for both sides. Some people think our lifestyles have changed, and consequently, you're getting more kinds of requests for those kinds of things.
Or now it's 7:26, and the person from the cable office said he needs a five-minute warning before we start the next meeting. Is from an open meetings act point of view, is there any reason why we couldn't cover the rest of this under other business on the main agenda for the meeting?
No, we can't. We can just continue on afterwards. If anybody cares to stay, we'll, we'll just continue the open meeting study session afterwards.
We'll take a break.
Yes, we'll take a five-minute break. Before we adjourn and bring this back at the regular meeting, is there any public comment on the study session? Seeing none, we are adjourned until our next meeting. We'll give a five-minute warning to our cable person and to the rest of the board.